Hey Jim.
So I should pause then, obviously. Okay, good evening. Looks like we're just waiting for a couple more people to connect.
Jesse, is it possible to have everybody put their name on that's a guest rather than just a phone number or first name only?
You know, possibly, but I don't, you know, I don't know if phone numbers can put their name in, quite honestly.
Okay, I didn't know.
And you could, you've said it out loud Stacy, so maybe people will be able to do that, but sometimes it's hard to navigate too.
Okay.
You can always look in the participants list, which might help you, but there will be phone numbers listed. At least there's one. Okay, Faith, is everybody in pretty much? Okay, all right, let's, let's get started. It is 5:32, so we're right on time. Welcome everyone. This is the City of Livingston Planning Board meeting. It is September 21st. So I'm going to toggle back and forth here and make sure I can see the agenda. We are going to go ahead and start off with roll call. So when I say your name, planning board members, please say aye. And if you're in the audience, please mute your microphone. So we don't have any background noise. Thank you very much. Stacy.
Here.
Jim. Barrett.
Here.
Thanks Jim. Misha.
Here.
Tori. Jonathan.
Here.
Taya.
Here.
Shannon. Sorry Shannon, I didn't hear you.
Are you present?
There you are. Sorry, thank you. And then I'm Jesse Wilcox.
Oh.
Oh, could you meet your, I wonder if I can mute you. Just make sure if you're in the audience, your, your microphone is muted, please. We are missing Mike Petrie this evening. He has stepped off the planning board, so there will be an open, non-freeholder position on the planning board moving forward.
What is it? Non-freeholder position?
Faith, do you think you can mute the audience by chance?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my mouse is either dying or not connecting.
Oh shoot.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes. So thanks Jonathan for getting both the August and the June meeting minutes to the planning board. Does anyone have any comments or questions about the June 22nd, June or August 2022 meeting minutes?
Jesse?
Yep.
For some reason I didn't get a copy of the minutes. I went back and looked for them, but I didn't get them.
Of either the August or the June. Okay, you know what, actually that's a, an interesting point now that I think about it. Typically they're included in the packet. And now that I think about it, they were not in the packet. So Jim Woodhull or Faith, if the members of the planning board have not received the meeting minutes, can we defer again to the next meeting to approve both June and August?
Yes, yes you can.
Okay, and then Jim, will you make sure to include those meeting minutes in the packet that's sent out to both the planning board and the public?
Well, we just got June ones, so yeah.
Yeah, the June ones were in the public information.
Okay, so you should. We'll, we'll skip that approval for this evening. If you have any problems finding those meeting minutes Stacy or anyone else, I'm happy to help you triage that. Okay, we are now going to go into just general public comment. So for those of you on tonight as guests, thank you for being here. We, we very much appreciate public comment. This public comment however, is not on the agenda item this evening, which is the public hearing for the Mountain View subdivision. This is just general public comment for items that, or issues that the planning board has jurisdiction on. We will absolutely give you the opportunity to comment on the agenda item, which is the subdivision review. This is just general public comment on, on anything that the planning board has jurisdiction on that you'd like to mention this evening. So I'm going to go ahead and open public comment. Please state your name and your address and we give everyone three minutes for public comment on the planning board. So, does anybody have any public comment? You're more than welcome to virtually raise your hand, or you can turn your camera on and you can wave at me. Or you can unmute yourself and speak out and let me know that you're ready to make a comment. Okay, anyone interested in making general public comment? I'll give another opportunity. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone.
Jesse, I just, I, this is Ruth Weisman and my only comment is that I want to thank all the committee members for their hard work. I really appreciate that very much. So thank you very much.
Great, thanks Ruth. And would you mind providing us your address too, please? Oh.
Uh, 173 Mill Creek, East Fork Road, Livingston, Montana.
Great. Thank you very much for your comment Ruth. Anyone else for general public comment this evening? Last call. Okay, thank you very much. And we will move on to the next agenda item. So new business, the continued public hearing for the Mountain View subdivision. Now, um, what I'd like to do is first open this up for a staff report or comment. And then I also want to allow Mr. Fields and his colleagues to again, address the planning board and the public with any additional comments they may have. I'll remind the audience that this is our second continued public hearing. We did begin this public hearing at our meeting in August. So I will stop there and I will open it up to, to Mr. Woodhull to see if he has any staff updates that he would like to provide now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board is aware, the staff report was read into the record at the previous meeting. In the interim between the meetings, the planning department issued you a memorandum that was also made public. And the written comments that the city has received between the meetings, you have received and are also posted for the public. I would be glad to ask, answer any questions at any time during this meeting, but at this time I have nothing to add.
Okay, planning board, do you have any clarifying questions you'd like to ask Mr. Woodhull before we open it up to Mr. Field and his associates? Okay, I'm hearing none. And I do want to thank you for the extensive packet. Many of us went through the extensive growth policy revision process and the packets were very lengthy. They were full of, of a lot of pertinent information that helped both the planning board navigate that process and also gave the opportunity for the public to also navigate and make a comment. So I just appreciate the, the packet that was provided. And I will now open it up to Mr. Fields and your colleagues. If you would like to speak on behalf of your project, this would be a great time to do it.
Yeah, I will do a very short version. Thank you, Madam Chair, of my comments a month ago, which are, we have worked with Sanderson Stewart, who was a very well reputed land planning firm in Bozeman and in Billings to make sure that we are consistent with statute, consistent with zoning. We are consistent with the long-term plans for city infrastructure. Most of which on this project are in the process of going into the ground right now, paid for by our friends at Federal Express. So neither the, so the city of Livingston isn't on the hook for this particular 2,200 linear feet of sewer water and stormwater. And that we also believe that we are consistent with the growth policy. I know there was some discussion about that last time. This is infill. We were annexed into the city 18 years ago. So perhaps the time to object to the fact that it was a checkerboard annexation would have been then, rather than now, but that's been done. We've been zoned for a number of years and we think despite any comments to the contrary, that we are completely consistent and have crossed our Ts and dotted our Is and that we are playing by the rules. And that's really what I think a good community and corporate and individual citizens should do, which is play by the rules. The other thing I will say is that I think that having the west entrance to our community be nice and be good is really important. The east entrance, we all know it's kind of slipshod. And so we think that this will be an awesome development and solve or help contribute towards the solving of a number of problems with that, that our community endures. So no, no sense re-going over everything we did last time. I would just like to say I would like, you know, respectful and appropriate consideration, particularly considering that on advice of experts, one of whom's on the line here from Sanderson Stewart, we have followed the rules to get this approved. So thank you for your consideration, Chair Wilcox and the rest of the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fields. Um, I think what I will do now, I know the board is going to have some questions, but I'm going to open it up to the public comment now. And then I will, after we hear public comment on this agenda item, then we can open it up to the board for questions of Mr. Fields and his associates. So this is the time where I will ask the public to comment on this agenda item. So what we ask of you is you state your, your name, full name and your full address and we try and give you three minutes. I do my best to hold up my phone and, and show you where your time is at. I understand that three minutes is not a long time. We set this precedent when we were in the growth policy and our meetings went very long and I'm, I'm going to stick with that. But let me just say that I very much appreciate, as do the rest of our, I think I can speak for the planning board. We very much appreciate the public showing up. We appreciate the written comments that we receive and any verbal comments. Civic engagement is very important. And I think it's very helpful for those of us who are serving on advisory boards for the city commission. So with that, if you have a comment that you'd like to make, again, there's a virtual option of raising your hand. You could do that. You can wave at me and turn your mic off and start speaking. Or if there's something else that is helpful for you to let me know, even to make a public comment, go for it. So if you would like to make a comment, please go ahead and raise your hand. I see Ken Cochran, would you like to go ahead and unmute name, address and go ahead and make your comment?
Yeah, I believe I'm unmuted, Miss Chair.
Yes.
Good evening. I am Ken Cochran, a board member of Friends of Park County. My address is 60 Majestic Ridge Trail, Livingston, Montana. Friends of Park County believes that the simple, clear language in the Montana subdivision law not only allows, but actually requires you to consider your new growth policy when making your recommendation on the subdivision application. Let me quote Montana Code annotated 76-1-605 parent 1. Subject to subsection 2, after adoption of a growth policy, the governing body within the area covered by the growth policy pursuant to 76-1-601 must be guided by and give consideration to the general policy and the pattern of development set out in the growth policy in the A, authorization, construction, alteration, or abandonment of public ways, public places, public structures, or public utilities. And B, authorization, exception, acceptance, or construction of water main sewers, connection facilities, or utilities. The Mountain View subdivision application describes the new roads, sidewalks, waters, sewer line, and stormwater facilities that will be built. So these subsections of the Montana subdivision law requires the planning board to consider and be guided by its 2021 growth policy. In addition, the statute, Montana Code annotated 76-1-605 parent B, parent 2, makes it clear that non-compliance with the growth policy can be the part of grounds for denying or conditioning a subdivision application, as long as there are other grounds based upon the city's regulations. In our 14-page written testimony, which I trust you have had an opportunity to read, and for those citizens participating on this Zoom call, you can read it on friendsaparkcounty.org's homepage. We have laid out many other grounds for withholding, denying, or imposing conditions. And this allows the planning board to rely upon the growth policy as an additional grounds for your recommended action to the city commission. Our written testimony lists 13 different goals, objectives, and strategies in the goal, growth policy that the development of this subdivision will conflict with. Your common sense tells you that a big blob on an isolated strip of commercial development at the western end of the city is totally at odds with the fundamentals of the growth policy.
Okay, Mr. Cochran, thank you for your comment. You've hit your three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask that you recognize Tom Blue Rock to continue Friends of Park County's comments.
Okay, Mr. Blue Rock, are you present with hand up? Yep.
Yes, here I am.
Go for it. Name and address.
Okay, start now. I am, I'm Tom Blue Rock, a board member of Friends of Park County. My address is 122 South Second Street Downtown Livingston, Montana. In case you haven't read, read our written testimony, it may came as a shock to you to find out that the so-called highway commercial zone allows almost anything to be built. That a strip, not just strip commercial, which is hardly, hardly the attractive thing that, that Mr. Field talks about, but high-density residential, mid-rise buildings up to five stories and, and, and almost, almost anything else. But also businesses, banks, barber shops, restaurant and bars, all uses that, that belong downtown, not on a freeway interchange on the edge of Livingston. The area represented by this is also about the same size as the script commercial zone at, at, at 89 South. At 100 acres, it's almost twice the size of downtown, twice as big. In addition to that land, there are hundreds of acre, of more acres that can be developed this way outside of downtown and outside the city limits under current zoning and, and land use designations and designations in the growth policy. One of the unique features of, of Livingston is its uncluttered east and west entrances. They're, 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 they're largely open space, not the sort of commercial glop you see in other places. I think we should preserve this. The city has already demonstrated it's, that it will stop that from happening when it, when it denied the loves, the love service station on the east end of town. Let's continue that here. I conclude by respectfully asking the planning board to deny this application and reconsider the amount and the location of existing commercial zoning and commercial land mixed in the growth policy as soon as possible. Let's stop commercial sprawl and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blue Rock. I saw Frank Schroeder was up next. Would you like to unmute and name and address and begin your testimony, please?
Madam Chair, I'm letting Ann Donahoe, we're sharing a computer, so she's gonna talk now and then I'll raise my hand later.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening. I am Ann Donahoe, a supporter of Friends of Park County. My address is 477 Mill Creek Road in Prey. Friends of Park County has identified multiple grounds for denial of the subdivision application based on the criteria in the Montana Code annotated 76-3-608, criteria for local government review, subsection parent 3, parent A, and the parallel provisions in the city subdivision ordinance. Section 3-B-6, parent B, Romanate 4, subsections, they are as follows. A, impacts on agriculture. B, impacts on agricultural water use facilities. C, impacts on local public services. D, impacts on natural environment. E, impacts on wildlife and habitat. And F, impacts on public health and safety. Within those topics, subsections, your subdivision ordinance poses 23 separate questions the planning board needs to consider. Answering those 23 questions should help you review the relevant evidence or lack thereof. And based on that, make a recommendation for the city commission to deny the application, to approve the application with conditions to mitigate potential impacts, or to approve it without conditions. Here is a very short summary of our written testimony related to those criteria. First, the August staff report and the application does not provide the facts to show that there will be no harmful impacts on agriculture and agriculture water facilities on the neighboring farm property, wildlife, habitat, or natural resources, including the wetland, and on air quality, on public safety, especially fire risk. Please see the letter from the Montana Department of Fish and Wildlife, which addresses certain of these matters. Nor do the application and the August staff report provide relevant and credible information on the impacts on public services, or more precisely on the taxpayers who are going to be expected to help pay to build and maintain the new roads, water, water lines, sidewalks, stormwater facilities, et cetera. Perhaps the city should consider requiring the preparation of a taxpayer impact statement. Second, we identified several instances in which the August staff report misrepresented. Oh, I'm over?
Yep, that's it.
Oh. Sorry.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Jesse, you're muted.
Jesse, you're muted.
I'm blabbing away over here. Thank you for letting me know. Okay, um, on, I see Jean Kefler has her hand up. Jean, name and address, and you can start your testimony, please. On your phone, can you do?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jean Kefler. I am a co-founder and board member of Friends of Park County. I live at 1010 Swingley Road, Livingston. As we explained in our extensive written testimony, we recommend that you deny the application on the grounds it does not satisfy state law and your local ordinance. However, we have suggested that it would be prudent for the planning board to recommend conditions of approval, should the city commission decide to approve the application. Conditions of approval are needed to mitigate adverse impacts on agriculture, wildlife, public safety, and public services. You and your staff can develop the conditions of approval based on the information you have received in the course of this hearing. As Ken Cochran explained, you are allowed by law to include with those conditions other conditions that will help reconcile this application with the growth policy. Here are our suggestions for conditions addressing the growth policy. Number one, limit the authorized future uses of the lots to light manufacturing, transportation terminals, and warehouse uses which are permitted in the highway commercial zone. This limitation would be consistent with the current uses on the property, a printing facility and the FedEx shipping facility. These uses are not the kinds of uses that would be located downtown. Secondly, proactively prevent the extension of the new internal road to the east beyond the city limits to prevent it from being used to help justify and facilitate additional annexation and commercial development and require a continuous open space designation and buffer to the east. Friends of Park County will provide an illustration of how this condition could be met. And three, you can specify landscaping and design standards you should do, and we think you should do so. Thank you for your service and for considering our recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Jean. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Larry Stevenson, I see your name up. Say your, your full name and your address and you can begin your comment.
Hi folks, Larry Stevenson. 26 Sapphire Flat Trail, that's south of Livingston Way. The, the county changed our address after 35 years, a little bit ago. So it's by the Lock Haven Fishing Access Area. And this is my first time participating in any of the city planning board activities. And what little bit of, I've, I've seen of this so far, personally, I'm really enthusiastic about somebody that wants to provide additional housing close to town. And although a lot of people want to have infill and people living in townhouses, I'm not sure how that works for extra cars or snowmobiles or boats or things like that, but somebody's willing to put the money into this, I'm really interested in seeing how this might play out. And I, I heard some of the commentary here just ahead of this. And it sounds like there's a lot of folks that apparently don't want any growth at all here, but I'd like to see some of our kids be able to stay in the area. And if, if these homes could potentially help provide that, I'm all for looking at every possible way to make that happen. And if these developers are not asking for any variances off of zoning or current planning, sure sounds like to me that they've got a clear sailing opportunity to make this occur. So I'm going to be interested in seeing how this plays out. So thanks for your time. What happened?
Jesse, you're off again.
Sorry, I'll just leave it on. Um, Mr. Schroeder, please make your comment. I'm sorry, I didn't realize your hand was up and you wanted to make a comment. So go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Frank Schroeder, Board Chair of Friends of Park County. My address is 477 Mill Creek Road in Prey. In addition to the merits of the subdivision application itself, this proceeding has highlighted some serious issues that need to be addressed. First, it is urgent that the growth policy be translated into revised zoning and changes to your annexation policy and your infrastructure plans. Without those implementation steps, more and more decisions will be made that contradict the growth policy that you and the residents work so hard to fashion. If that continues to happen, the growth policy will become just like many other plans, fine words that have no effect on reality. In that connection, you may recall that in June of 2021, your staff urged the city commission to not make any changes to the draft growth policy to address the question of the consistency of infrastructure plans and investments with the growth policy. They promised they would address these issues, so the city commission didn't need to act. Second, there are some obvious contradictions within the growth policy itself between the stated policies and the land use designations, both inside and surrounding the city. The growth policy calls for focusing development in the downtown and maintaining traditional compact development patterns. But it, it's, it uses land use designations that justify zoning. But it it's it uses land use designations that justify zoning hundreds of acres. For unlimited commercial development outside downtown and outside the city limits. We summarize these first two issues in the memo we sent to the city commission in May two thousand and twenty one, which was sent to you last month. Third, you need and deserve more thorough and objective staff reports to aid you in your objective evaluation of subdivision proposals. We believe this should be a high priority item for your new staff planner. We hope you will take action on these three issues. The first step would be to schedule a discussion about them at your October or November meeting. We remain grateful for your service to our community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Okay, would anyone like to make a comment? Go ahead and raise your hand. Wave at me or unmute and you can start speaking. Second call for public comment on the agenda item for the subdivision review. Okay, last call. All right, hearing none, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. Thank you all very much for your participation and your comments. Now we can go ahead and open it up to the planning board members for questions and discussion. On what we've heard so far tonight and what we've been able to read. Who would like to go first? No questions?
I can go first.
Okay, why don't we go Jonathan then, Taya? Okay, go ahead, Jonathan.
So I wanted to ask again about the plan for. The plan and need to loop. Infrastructure out that way and what that would cost the city as right now. And whether that's needed for this development and if so, who's going to foot the bill? So I wasn't sure who to best direct that to.
I would assume Shannon could be one to answer that question and maybe Jim, city staff for sure, I would think would be able to chime in here.
So Jonathan, I reserve about three, three questions you had there. The need for the west west end water loop. Yes, there's absolutely a need for the west end water loop. Obviously, there's a concern with a two mile long dead end water main. It is in our water master plan. We just did a cost estimate to do that based on construction dollars in two thousand and twenty two. And we're looking at about a three million dollar project. How I would approach that. Is at least for this development, I would put a condition in this preliminary plat application. To make sure this development pays their proportionate share of of that extension. We all need to keep in mind that there's also close to forty acres that's annexed into the city. That's across Highway ten from this as well, that that could be a partner in that. As far as a funding mechanism to do that, I think there's. The the easy answer to that would be we could create an SID similar to what we're doing with green acres and Montag. For sewer main extensions and we could look at that boundary. Being the Jessen property, this Mountain View subdivision, PFL, and any other city annexed properties. That would benefit from this water main loop would be a funding mechanism that the city could use.
So is there another one that I maybe overlooked? I guess it's, is it needed for this project to go forward?
So we have not seen an updated water design report. We obviously have, and Andrew is a hundred percent correct. The city has reviewed and approved and it's under construction as of right now. An eight inch water main loop that surrounds the PFL complex. There's a twenty two hundred foot sewer main extension, so. Initially, absolutely the city has capacity. But depending on what capacity needs are necessary as this subdivision develops. There may need to be improvements to the Starlo Booster Station. Or we get to a point where the the loop is absolutely necessary for fire flows specifically. For for highway commercial zoning.
And if we were to put that in the conditions of approval. What, I mean, how do we know, how, how, is there a way to help determine that? This development helps pay for itself, I guess. Is that what would, what does a language like that look like?
So, and I appreciate, I think these are great questions. And again, I I have, I have a list of at least five conditions. That I would be making recommendations of the planning board to consider. For approval for this subdivision and and one of those would is pertains to. Doing some modifications to the Starlo Booster Station to to ensure adequate domestic and fire flow. As this, as this subdivision will be developed. And again, we're, we would, we would be getting an updated design report based on. Highway commercial zoning for this acreage. But as each each lot is purchased and developed, we more than likely be going through the site plan review process. And running those water capacity calcs in our water model. And and requiring the developer of each of those lots. If if there's a, if there's a modification that needs to be made. To the booster station to provide adequate domestic and fire flows, it would be on, it would be their responsibility to do that.
Okay.
Chair, may I make an additional answer to?
Not right now, Mr. Fields, I'm sorry, the board is discussing it at the moment. Let us finish, let Jonathan finish his comment and and we'll see if we can get to your comment. Okay, we're in the middle of discussion. Thank you.
So. I guess, is this the time for comments or just questions?
So, so Jonathan, if I may continue. I, so I will, I will tell you that in working with Sanderson and Stuart and Andrew and and Richard and their team. They've already done some things. In this current FedEx project that, you know, again, we have the Jessen property across Highway ten. That's been annexed into the city for about the same period of time. So they, the FedEx project has actually paid for water and sewer main extensions all the way out to the access road. And Highway ten interchange. So if and when the Jessen property is is developed. It'll be the Jessen property developer that'll have to extend from. Where this FedEx project has terminated those water and sewer mains at that location. And extend over into the Jessen property. And and that west end road, Highway ten intersection is where we'd like to do that west end water loop. And and to be able to loop the PFL system and the Jessen property.
So I guess, is there any guarantee that? I mean, I just want to guarantee that the city doesn't end up paying, picking up the three million dollars or five million dollars. Or whatever it ends up being to do this loop, because it seems like we can't afford to do that. So that's kind of, I guess, I want to make, so I I'd love to help make that a condition of approval. And I don't know the best language to do that, but it seems like as it's currently proposed and the stuff that's currently in front of us. It seems like the city can't afford that. Is that correct?
Again, if we, if we go through the SID mechanism. The city would be administrating that and we could, we would create that boundary. And if you look at the conditions in the staff report. I think Jim certainly put a condition on there on on waiving the right for SID waivers. For for exactly what you're talking about. And and my goal and my role as the Public Works Director. Again, as I mentioned previously, I would like to to add a specific condition. That pertains to any improvements to the Starlo Booster Station. And this development paying their proportionate share of the west end water loop. And if we create an SID, the city would not. It it would be the the property owners within that SID boundary that would be paying those costs. Now, I'm going to tell you that we have a vested interest in this because there were previous decisions made. And that that resulted in a two mile long dead end water loop. And so I I can tell you that, you know, it is our job as a city to be able to provide water and sewer. For these parcels that have been annexed into the city eighteen years ago.
But it's also our job as the planning board to make sure that this development doesn't impact local services and have. And not be able to pay for itself. So that's what I'm thinking about here. And then I was thinking with the Jessen property as a part of the SID, there's no guarantee it'll be developed in. In the next little while to help pay for this water main, is that right?
So there's, there's some processes in place that, you know, Andrew with. The extensions that they've done with the FedEx property. That they could establish a payback that could, that could have up to maybe a fifteen year life with that. So Andrew and this project would be reimbursed by the potential Jessen property owner. To pay for their proportionate share for for the work that's been done to this point.
And then, thank you. And the other part, I guess, about the waiver protest for SID. In the staff report says it's for pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. It doesn't say it is for the. Water loop. So I just, if we're gonna prove that, I'd like to see that changed as well. I, the next.
And and again, that's why, you know, I've told you, I had, I had two conditions that were, that would more clearly define. The Starlo Booster Station and the West End Water Loop.
Okay.
And I think we can discuss that if we get to that point.
Okay. And then my next question was about the wildlife. Fish, Wildlife and Parks Letter, which I don't think was included in today's packet, and I think it should have been. But I wanted to make sure that last month we heard from the developer that they would be happy to provide. Bear-proof trash cans and things, and I wanted to make sure we make that a condition of approval. Because they said they'd be happy to do that, that's what FWP recommended. And I think that that's just something I wanted to, I guess, ask about, make sure that we could improve that.
Anything else, Jonathan?
Nope, I think I'm good for now. Thanks, Chair.
Okay. Stacy, do you want to go next?
No, I don't want to go next, but I just have a clarifying question for Shannon. When you mentioned the loop, are you referring to looping on the Jessen property? Are you referring to looping up to the backside of the residential of Discovery Vista?
Well, when, again, when we had that discussion during the Discovery Vista preliminary plat meeting. That developer had agreed to upsize their water main. With the understanding that that was the alignment that we were going to utilize for the west end water loop. So. We we need to loop water from the north side of the tracks, under the tracks, out, out to connect to this PFL dead end water main.
And and just refresh my memory, the Jessen property butts up against the existing Discovery Vista land?
No, it does not. It's 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 about a mile further west.
It's the same owner, but it is a long ways from the development.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so there's a potential of. Taking the sewer and water to the Jessen property and it would still be a dead end loop. I mean, it would be a dead end, it would not be a loop.
Well, there's going to be a loop out there at some point. It is, it is a, it is a top two requirement and priority that we have. We have, we're in a similar situation with the hospital in in east of town as well. But both of those are critical water system improvements that that are in our capital improvement plans.
Thank you.
Shannon, I might ask a clarifying question about an SID. So if the thought is in one of your conditions, and I know we're going to get to your conditions, and I appreciate that you are bringing some to the table. Could you remind me that a special improvement district? Is, you know, so where does, if the, if your condition of approval is to. Have the opportunity to create a special improvement district that encompass, encompasses. The property we were discussing today and potentially the Jessen property, does that mean that? The city would be required to pay a portion of that, the developer would be required to pay a portion of that. The SID would be required to pay a portion of that. And then the full city of Livingston residents would also be required to pay a portion of that. So a special improvement district means the special improvement district pays twice. And the people who live in the city but are outside of the special improvement pay once. Is that correct?
No.
Madam Chair, I'll clarify that. The SID is a, is a mapped area that is benefiting from the improvement. So the general existing population would not be involved at all. The entire burden would be on that mapped area that is benefiting from from the work at hand.
Okay, because I remember when there was conversation around putting an overpass or an underpass in. The north side of town would be considered an SID and they would pay. A certain percentage of tax in addition to the tax that the rest of the city would pay. So I would, that's sort of where my.
That was a very specialized situation where the cost was so enormous. That we were talking about differential benefit. Normally in an SID, it's very straightforward. Here's the district of the people who benefit. Here's the cost, we divide it by the number of owners or the number of square footage each owner owns. And we pay it off over a twenty year period with their tax dollars.
Okay, and this three million dollar estimate Shannon that you mentioned is for that water main loop. That would go below the railroad tracks across the north side of town and back into Livingston?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and and Madam Chair, I want to bring up something else too that's that's already set and in place in this area. And Jim has more information about, you know, it's my understanding the boundary right now just encompasses the current PFL. Location, but there is a tax increment district out the west end. And it's my understanding that there is a fairly healthy balance in that. And that, just like our downtown URA and TIF. That is helping pay for downtown improvements. There is money in the bank that that actually could be used for this, this water main extension. Based on what that TIF has collected over its life.
Okay, so, so maybe what I'm hearing you say is that. And and maybe this is another question for you too, Shannon, is the city's been doing a lot of upgrades to the city sewer water lines. In the city limits and the downtown area. Will, so is that paid for? Are any additional upgrades that need to happen and have maybe been on the schedule for the city? To continue upgrading current infrastructure within city limits? Is that currently paid for? Is that, does that take precedent? Would this project? If if approved, would funding for this water loop take precedent over? Existing upgrades that need to be done within city limits?
Those, those could happen concurrently, just like the projects we did this. Those those could happen concurrently, just like the projects we did this summer with the water main rehab and a sewer, getting the Civic Center and the SAC Park. You know, we have, we're gonna, next year, we're planning to do a three, three and a half million-dollar project with Green Acres Sewer. We're doing a downtown alley project. We we can, we can do more than one construction project per season. And if and if this is truly paid for by an SID and not have city monies associated with it, we'll continue to do our priorities using our ratepayer money and water sewer street funds. And this could be a separate project.
Okay.
And really, and and I really, I I really, you know, as as we have this, which is a very good conversation. You know, I do want to give Andrew and his team credit. I mean, when PFL was initially constructed, they paid for infrastructure that provided additional capacity, a lot more additional capacity than just PFL. And and that was done over twelve years ago. So, I mean, we do have additional capacity in in our system right now, and the ability is just, again, it really depends on how each lot is developed and what the water demand is for that. You know, FedEx, FedEx does not have a lot of water demand, and it's a large building. But, you know, if if something else that goes in there that meets the current highway commercial zoning and requires a fire suppression system, then we will run those counts through and and really see what the limits of the Starlo Booster Station is. And I think that gets back to the the additional condition on modifying that booster station to accommodate as 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 this development gets developed.
Okay. And the special improvement district can only go at the speed of development, right? So if only one, so say the only, say the market crashes and only one property is sold out of the thirty-nine that they put up for sale. And that is something that requires a lot of water. But it's only one property. So so again, can, I guess my my concern is, and maybe I heard this be an apprehension, maybe coming from city staff as well, is we don't know what's going to be put on there. So it could all sell and develop, could start right away. And and all the things that are being developed are very water-intensive. So I guess I'm just, I'm curious if that makes you nervous at all as far as the 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 ability for the city to afford through SIDs or other, you know, depending on what it is that gets built out there. I'm just a little bit concerned on the price tag that will eventually fall on city residents for something that is unforeseen at this point. Curious if that's making you apprehensive or nervous.
No, because, you know, that's an administrative process. And, you know, I I think it's great to have this discussion on at the planning board level. And I don't want to get off tangent too much, but but we have protections in place administratively in public works, building, planning through the planning process before we make any approvals. And if there's water main extensions, if we don't have the capacity, we're not going to approve a project and allow it to be built.
And that's a really interesting point, Shannon, that you bring up is if if we don't have the capacity, then we won't approve the project. But some of the arguments maybe that have been made is that the property that was annexed in, you know, eighteen years ago, and the new zoning was done five years ago. But so, you know, I've heard like, well, it's it's sort of a done deal. We've jumped through the hoops. We've done all this stuff. However, what I'm hearing you say is if we don't have the capacity, then we can, we cannot do the project. So I I'm I'm just curious about how we are how the city made some decisions multiple years ago, and, you know, eighteen years ago and perhaps five years ago. And now, when this subdivision comes before us, after we've gone through a very lengthy growth policy and heard copious public comment, now it seems like we should be able to discuss whether we have the capacity or we have the requirement by state statute to actually put this up against the growth policy. So I'm just, I just want to throw the the decisions that have been made passed are yes in the past. Other things have occurred between the past and now, i.e. the upgraded growth policy. And now I'm wondering what, you know, why we're getting this sort of retort that we are you know, we we aren't having to consider the growth policy in this review. And then I guess I'm just hearing you saying, well, if you don't have the capacity, we don't have to do it. So I'm just kind of making that statement as a conundrum, as a question mark, maybe. And I and I can yield the floor and let somebody else take over for a little while. Anybody else anywhere? Tori, I see your hand up. Oh. Do you want to go now?
Oh, Taya was next. Yeah, I don't, I don't want to.
I'm sorry.
Apologies, I had to go off video. My connection is not great, but I just wanted to ask for a little bit of clarification, and maybe this feeds into the conversation we've been having about the phases for the plating and what, you know, what that means with regard to this project.
What what do you mean, Taya? What's your question?
Um, just so is that with regard to, you know, installation of infrastructure? Is that, you know, when properties are going up for sale? I wasn't totally sure what the phases implied. And maybe that's a question for Chris. I'm not sure.
Go ahead, Andrew. I see you're unmuting. Do you want to answer that one?
Yeah, well, I I'd like Chris Nauman from Sanderson Stewart to answer that. He's the expert.
A good question, Taya. Again, I'm Chris Nauman. I'm Associate and Senior Planner for Sanderson Stewart. And yeah, I think that's a a great point to bring up because it's very relevant to sort of the the capacity, the water and sewer capacity question. So in the application, we're proposing. This is the first step in the process, the preliminary plat. After that, that entitlement would not allow a single lot to be sold or developed. First, you have to go through the final plat process. And we have proposed that the lots suggested in the preliminary plat would be go to final plat in three phases. And those are marked in your, it's easiest to see in the overall development plan exhibit provided in the application, which is planners like to use color. Engineers and surveyors only do a black and white. So but the color, the color exhibit shows the phases. Phase one is marked with a red dashed outline. And what is required of final plating is that all of the all of the required infrastructure be physically in place and constructed before a final plat can be approved. So phase one would be the first phase. Phases two and three would require additional new infrastructure to be constructed. And one of the reasons commonly phasing is used is because that additional investment in infrastructure will take additional time. And what it means in terms of capacity is you know, these these lots would come online for sale and development over a number of years, not all at once. So not only would the final plating be phased, but then the sale of the lots would be phased and subsequent development of the lots would be phased over what most likely would take, you know, several years. So that would also phase the demand, the future demand on on water and sewer, which ties back to what Shannon was talking about in that there's multiple opportunities afforded to the city to keep assessing and reassessing demand and capacity being proposed at the at the final plating stages. And then subsequently, with every site plan submittal will be approved or denied based on numerous factors, one of which being public infrastructure capacity. So and Shannon, please correct me if if I'm mischaracterizing your, what you said. But when Shannon said, you know, the city could deny a project if there is not capacity or is being proposed before the capacity of the West End Loop, Water Loop is completed, that the city can deny a project. He's referring to a site plan, you know, a specific development like the FedEx project or the PFL project. So there's several more checks and balances and and a series of public decisions to be made every every step of the way. So, Taya, I don't know if that answers your question in regard to phasing.
Very helpful. Thanks, Chris.
Taya, if if I may add, the city made a decision eighteen years ago when they annexed this property that we'd have adequate capacity. And and that gets back to Andrew and his and his development team extended twelve-inch water mains and ten-inch sewer mains all the way out to PFL with to to provide the capacity for the for a parcel like this to develop. So Chris is correct. You know, this is highway commercial and and we will have this, we will more than likely be going through the site plan process for each individual lot, depending on how they're developed. But and we have, we we do have the authority to deny based on that. But I think that gets back to if we're, if and when we get to that point, that's where we have this discussion with about SIDs and and getting the water loop out there and including all the all the property owners out there that benefit from that loop.
Thanks, Shannon.
And if I may add, just a little more context to what Shannon said, and when he referred to PFL extending water mains sized to service, you know, much more capacity than than PFL demands. And Andrew, please correct me if I if I mischaracterize this, but I think that investment in those ten and twelve-inch mains coming all the way from you know, the core of the town out to PFL was approximately a two-million-dollar investment. So just to to carry out that math, the West, the West Water Loop is really a five-million-dollar project, two million of which was funded privately by the applicant. You know, over a decade ago, as we heard from from Shannon, the the three-million-dollar balance would be most likely paid for by an SID. That is the entire purpose of SIDs. And just to be crystal clear, an SID essentially does not cost the city or any taxpayer or resident not in that district a dollar. So the three-million-dollar remaining investment would be entirely borne by the properties within the district and would not cost the city of Livingston, capital C, a dollar, nor, I'm assuming, anyone else on this call other than Mr. Field. And so which is the exact purpose of of a special improvement district. I just want to make sure that was clear. It sounded like there might be a little bit of confusion on that. So thank you for.
And just make sure it's clear, Chris, that all the development out there on site is all paid by this developer. It it, there's no city money that goes into any of that. And then we turn it over for free to the city.
Okay, thank you, Chris, for clarifying. I do appreciate the SID. And I do appreciate this comment about several more checks and balances. So those, I'm just curious, do those checks and balances go before the city commission or just the city staff? Is that the process, once it's a site, a site plan, those don't become, come before the planning board? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, the the site plan process is administrative. It's staff.
Yeah.
The phasing, however, the the final plating of each phase does require city commission approval.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, I appreciate you guys walking me through that. And great question to Taya.
And and yeah. I I think, you know, another good point to add to all this is is say the scenario that this is approved and the city commission approves it. There are no occupancy permits granted until all this work is done to the city satisfaction. So they have, they are responsible for all the infrastructure. They can provide a letter of credit or for any infrastructure that's not completed, but that 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 is assurance to the city that we have a check that covers the balance of the work that hasn't been completed. So there can be no development on any of these lots until everything is done in in these additional conditions that Jonathan and I were talking about earlier. If if we, as a planning board, have a discussion on what those conditions are, and we send those to the commission, and the commission approves those, and the developer agrees with those conditions, there's nothing built out there until all of that's met. And if it's not, we we have, we have a check or a funding mechanism on how to how to make sure that they get done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, planning board members, who has additional questions that they'd like to bring up for either the staff or the developers? Go ahead, Tori.
I'm curious what the square footage of PFL's current structure is.
Thanks, Tori. That's approximately one hundred and eight thousand square feet. And part of it's on two levels. So the footprint is about a hundred and four thousand square feet, just the building, not counting the parking lot, which is bigger than the building.
That's that's perfect. Thanks. That's my only question for now.
Okay. Nisha, Jim, Stacy?
I have a couple of questions, I guess.
Go ahead.
So just clarifying that the shared-use path is on the map that you referenced in yellow. So and it shows it going across the highway and down the side of the road. Could you explain what that is? Or is that something that the development is paying for? Or you've been been, I believe it was one of the conditions. Somebody want to clarify that for me?
Chris?
Yes, and and please, Shannon, Jim, feel free to to chime in. But on that exhibit showing the shared-use path in in yellow, in our discussions with city staff, we identified the desire to potentially have a shared-use path running all the way back from this subdivision to town. And although I don't recall seeing that in the active transportation plan, which sort of surprised me. But we are proposing that that would be one of the improvements associated with this subdivision. So you've got the the one mirroring Highway Ten running back to town, but then also you see the one going kind of north-south along the the interior road and an arrow sort of pointing off, you know, back to the east. And that's a nod to another aspirational goal we've heard from the city that potentially there could be a shared-use path running all the way back to town on that southern alignment in conjunction with where those water and sewer lines that PFL and Andrew put in that Shannon was referencing, those, there's a That Shannon was referencing those, there's a utility easement. Running along that lower. Alignment of the water and sewer and. At such time that that easement, which I think Shannon's mentioned before is. Unfortunately, at the time being only for utility access, not. Public access or or. Or active transportation access. But it's a nod to that that easement perhaps could be. An access easement could be added to that utility alignment someday and you'd have. A shared use path connecting back to town, not next to the highway, which obviously. All of us that use shared use paths, the only thing better than a shared use path next to a road is a shared use path not next to a road. So just showing the options to have active transportation connectivity from this proposed subdivision. Back to town, the rest of town. In possibly two different, two different alignments should that become an option in the future. Does that answer your question, Stacy?
Um, yeah, I was just kind of curious as to what the expectation was to pay for that. Is that part of the phase or is that? Something just, as you say, a nod to or where does that stand?
Again, I'll let Shannon and and Jim pipe in, but usually. The a shared use path like that in active transportation facility like a road or a water sewer improvement. Is done along. The front edge adjacent to the subdivision or the development. And so. The the remainders of this shared use path going back into the city beyond the property boundary. Would be potentially paid for in the future by other developments along that corridor. Or often, there's actually a fair number of. State and and federal grants that we use in our planning projects to get active transportation. Construction funded. You know, as obviously a community project, when there's not the opportunity to have. Private development or a road project to incorporate that into their design and budget. But again, Shannon, I don't know if you want to shed any more light on that.
Madam Chair, may I do that? So again, I really applaud the planning board members. This is another one of the conditions that I have on my list and it really pertains to. The city and Andrew and his team. Seeing if there's a possibility that we could use the utility easement. On the water sewer main extensions out to PFL, which are separated from Highway Ten. Chris, it is actually a recommendation in our active transportation plan to have connectivity to PFL and I don't want to. Mispeak for Andrew, but it's my understanding that Andrew has actually met with the Parks and Trails Committee and and offered. So a sum of money to help with. A shared use path that connects PFL to to Livingston. As far as funding mechanisms for. Multi-use trails. We have the Transportation Alternative Program through the Montana Department of Transportation. That we have been very successful in. We did the O Street Trail that leads from RX Coffee out to the Myers River Trail. We've done some sidewalk improvement. Projects through the TA. So that's that's a funding source and a grant application. The city can use transportation impact fees. To help pay for multi-use trails. So as each one of these lots in this subdivision would be developed and before. They get an occupancy or even a building permit, they're having to pay. Transportation, water, sewer, police, fire, park, impact fees. And so that money could be. Used to help fund the trail. So there's there's several options, but I think I think I'm certainly. Very supportive of as this Mountain View subdivision would be developed to make sure that we have connectivity. With the multi-use path within connection to Livingston.
Thanks. And another question. I guess. I was wondering if you all have. In your minds, some idea of. How many apartment complexes or or certain kinds of businesses that you were thinking about? Putting on these lots. Instead of just, and I heard tonight that I wasn't sure. We don't, you don't have to have. Approval on every single lot as to what is built there, right?
If I can just jump in really quick.
Oh, you just hit yourself off. You're you're not on.
Thanks. Thank you. When this is subdivided, those lots just go on the open market and are sold to the highest bidder. So the. Once it's subdivided, the PFL, the the the. And the developer doesn't, isn't, they're not going to be dictating what what goes into what place. They're just going to be be selling it to the open market. So it really, it's really. It would have to be a really insane market for them to be like, to be picking and choosing who is going where. They're just going to be selling these lots on the open market. So that the the subdivider, the developer has really no stay in what's going to be. Developed where after it's subdivided. I'm 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 open to other comments on to that effect, but that's that's how I understand how this process works.
Well, at our last meeting, we had discussion on. PFL's interest in providing some housing and some apartment complexes. So we did have a discussion that they already were thinking ahead to to that. Which. Brings my question to the next issue that I foresee is. Having warehouse trucks. And your street be not wide enough to handle a lot of residential parking or or. Getting to and from the apartments and having all of the warehouse type trucks FedEx. And have enough room on the street, especially if you have parking. So. I just wondered if you had thought of that as a potential problem.
So Stacy, I'm going to take a stab at that, okay?
Okay.
So with this highway commercial zoning, I mean, the zoning dictates dictates what's allowed. On each lot. And. We do not envision any street, really any street parking on this road that Andrew's currently building for the FedEx property. And we have some, I think, fairly strict parking guidelines where. Each one of these developments is going to have to is is will require a certain amount of off-street parking. For each development, depending on apartment complexes, housing, whatever. We have, I I think our parking requirements are are adequate. And so I I would not envision. The street getting clogged with cars parked along the curb.
Okay.
For this development.
Okay, thank you. And and I I also wanted to say that having read through. The entire packet and I I just want to compliment PFL and all of the associates for doing. You know, a very extensive job on putting together your research. So. I just wanted to to give you some positives in all of this.
Thanks, Stacy.
And. I guess the rest I have, we can do unless this isn't a time to give my thoughts on some conditions, right? Or is it?
You know, I think this is time to give our thoughts on on. Yeah, you can give some thoughts on conditions, although Jim had his hand up, but I wondered if it pertained to the conversation unless we're going to. Veer off topic. Otherwise, I would suggest you, Jim, did Jim Barrett, did you have a question or a comment on what we've been talking about?
I just had a general comment.
Okay. Do you want to make that comment now or let Stacy do her conditions?
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay.
Yeah, I just. Mr. Field has been a very successful entrepreneur. I watched the PFL building in on Geyser Street. Become. Out of capacity for what he was, how he was growing. And I I understand why it was important to have a facility, a larger facility. That there may not have been a place in town. To accommodate that. And so there was seemed very logical to me that if there was going to be sort of a leapfrog. Annexation development that having that. PFL. Printing industry. Out there. Seemed appropriate. And in in as well as FedEx. Whatever they are doing there. Seem to be an appropriate adjunct to that, since there's a lot of shipping that is involved with PFL. But I guess I would just ask Mr. Field if what's the ultimate. You know, you've heard some comments from people about, and this is not the first time these have been heard. We've had other proposals. Outside of the jurisdictional area of Livingston. Where people concerned about. Leapfrog development and. You know, highway commercial and all that stuff. Interchange developments. And so I guess I'm curious. How? How you went from. Being a printing aficionado and providing jobs and all the other benefits that that brought. To. Making a proposal to the city. That involves. As someone mentioned, God knows what. Could happen out there. So I guess I. Just so you know, I'm not really in favor of this proposal. But I'd still like to hear what maybe. How you feel that you fit into a larger vision. For this community to propose something like that out there that is just. Really incompatible with. What people are trying to do with the growth policy. And just in general, trying to do. Called smart growth. Trying to encourage infill within the city. Trying to encourage housing within the city. So anyway, if you you don't have to answer that, but you you're welcome to. I just would be curious. Thank you.
Mr. Barrett, I I really appreciate the question and. What I think is your intent behind it. This classically fits the definition of infill because. The whole seventy-two acres is in the city limits and. Whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, whether the city would annex that seventy-two acres today. We're in it. And if you look at the maps, you have PFL at. Eleven of its twenty acres are needed for PFL. You have FedEx at six and a half. And what's left is a little strip around it. And that is infill, that little strip around it, and it takes advantage. Per the growth policy of existing infrastructure, it requires additional infrastructure. In today's dollars, PFL put in two million dollars to run the way oversized. For PFL's needs, sewer and water mains from the postal annex out to PFL. And then a sub-loop was required by the city. FedEx wasn't too happy about it, but they wanted this location. And by the way, I should say. This location is for safety and environmental reasons, instead of running twenty parcel trucks. From Jack Rabbit Lane every day over to Livingston to serve. Big Timber and Clyde Park and Will Sol and Gardner, et cetera. They're going to run two semis. And then those drivers will be garaged out of the Livingston facility. So that will reduce congestion on the interstate. And it will reduce, obviously. Fuel emissions and that sort of thing. So. Our original vision was we would like this next area to be something that is. That Livingston can be proud of. And as I I think maybe Chairwoman Jessie pointed out. There is no place. In the downtown area, which is not the same as the city limits, but there's no place in the downtown area. That has six and a half open acres, at least that I'm aware of, for a FedEx. And there's no place that has. You know, eleven or twenty, depending on how you want to count, for a PFL. We wanted to stay downtown when we were at Geyser and B. Everybody loved it. There's plenty of on-street parking because there's Fleishman Creek across the street. My wife took our dog every single day to Sacagawea Park. Your three-minute walk from Pickle Barrel. I mean, it was a nice location and we and we also had a rented location. From the newspaper, we had a rented location across from City Hall. We had a rented location at Main and B, actually two of them. We had a rented location on Clark for our first childcare, which is now East Side Coffee. And we kind of love the vibe. It just wasn't practical. There is no place to do development at scale in the downtown area. Unless you're just going to knock out blocks and blocks and blocks of residences where people currently live. Which I don't think any of us are going to advocate for. And so we. We were offered really good terms on some stuff in Bozeman, including the former Video Lottery Building, which is between Museum of the Rockies. And Bobcat Stadium. And I didn't want to move the business to Bozeman and we could have got a steal on that building. Because it was, yeah, former Video Lottery. We could have got a steal and I said, I'm not doing it. And we also looked at dirt out east of town. It was cheaper than what PFL paid for the current location, but it didn't seem like it was. I mean, it's way out and it wasn't very beneficial to the whole community and also to the extent that we do recruit out of Bozeman. It felt like you're driving two towns away. So we ended up where we are with the intent of having it be. Something that everybody in Livingston can be proud of. And when the city insisted that we build. Ten-inch sewer and twelve-inch water, we asked them why. Because again, it was one point two, one point three at the time, that'd be well over two million dollars in today's dollars. They said, because this is part of the long-term plan. This is going to happen. And you can't just build yourself a little three-inch water line. That will have to be ripped out and replaced when the expected future development over decades. Is is going to happen. And way back then in two thousand and four, we heard about this idea of looping to the two million. Gallon gravity. Fed gravity-powered water tank on the north side. And makes sense. Gravity doesn't cost the city any electricity. Gravity is really reliable. So. That was the idea and. You know, I think the market will decide whether residential. Well, what the mix will be between residential and commercial. And light industrial. This town needs residential. So I would be shocked. If we didn't have some significant demand for acres, particularly in the southeast. Area, which includes PFL's, I think, seven-ish lots and a number of lots. For Livingston West, Mountain View subdivision. I'd be shocked if people weren't jumping on that to put up. Four, six and eight plexes because it's close to town, it's easy access. It doesn't impact the whole over-the-tracks, under-the-tracks, public safety issue. And even to the extent that some of that housing ends up being rented or purchased by. People working Bozeman, when they come home to Livingston, where are they going to go out to dinner? Where are they going to go out to recreate? It'll be Livingston. So. That's kind of my vision and has been for a long time, that this is an amenity and that it's done nicely. So thank you just for the opportunity to restate that, Mr. Barrett.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Fields. Thanks for your question, Jim. Misha, I see your hand up.
Thank you. To kind of piggyback onto what Stacy and Tori said. Would PFL consider putting in either. CCNRs or recommend a condition of design standards so that. This subdivision has a cohesive. Feel to it from people who are driving into town. They're like, oh, this is. Feel to it from people who are driving into town. They're like, oh, this is. A homogeneous development rather than. A McDonald's and a Super 8 and all these different kinds of things. Um I think similar to what. Um Seventh in Bozeman is doing with their new development.
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer that. Thanks for the question. Um. We are, we, we have an internal document that is a draft set of CCNRs. Because obviously, if you sell one lot. And it's a nasty use, you just degraded the value of all the other lots. So we have a vested interest. In making this a desirable place for people doing uh uh their various projects. Um CCNRs were not a requirement of the subdivision application. But we intend to have this be something that is good and desirable until that last lot is sold. And then once, once that's done, it's there. The other thing is that the city. Both eighteen years ago and about five years ago, when PFL did its big addition. City looks at that stuff hard. The city has height requirements and standards and looks and. You know, can you do sheet metal siding? Does it have to be this? Does it have to be that? And I think Shannon's point to. This is not the last thing. And next thing you know, you're gonna have a skyscraper or a, a junkyard or whatever. Um it, I, having been through it twice, it is rigorous. And uh you know, they put us through the wringer, I think rightly so, to make sure that. I mean, the reason that PFL building is as pretty as it is. I told the architect, I wanted a rectangular metal box, which is what our Geyser Street building was. And the city said, no, you gotta do better than that. And the architect ended up making a very nice, very pretty building, included landscaping, et cetera. And today. I think anybody driving into town looking at that would be, say, oh, this is pretty cool. It's not like driving into Casper from the north side. So uh we, we will, before we start selling any lots, assuming this gets preliminary and final plat. Having place CCNRs, it's in our best interest is the landowners and it's in the community's best interest.
Could you do me a quick favor and just again, state what that acronym means? CCNRs? Whoever knows.
They are um. Conditions and rules. And one more C.
Evidence, maybe.
Evidence, yes. Um basically, all. Like condos have them, subdivisions have them, and they're the governing body for how. People have to live within that, usually with an uh an HOA.
Okay. Covenant, conditions, and restrictions is the, the definition of the acronym. Covenant, conditions, and restrictions.
Okay, and that a co- these CCRNs. Are put in after a subdivision is approved and prior to the sale of the lots by. The two organizations that would be selling the lots. That's how that works? Okay.
Generally, yes.
Okay, um because I think, you know, I, I appreciate Jim's question and I appreciate Mr. Field's. Comments because I could not agree more that. We do need housing desperately and I, and I was concerned when it was not added to the narrative. Uh curious why it wasn't added to the narrative. But maybe it's because you aren't specifically planning to develop housing. You're hoping to sell it to somebody who will develop housing, but. I don't know if that can be a guarantee when you put lots on an open market, but. But man, I would love to know that for sure because I do agree we need it. And I also sort of agree that. It would be an enormous benefit to the community if there were, you know, very thoughtful. You know. Individuals who purchased the, the, the properties that were adhering to those smart growth principles. The thing that. Concerns me is that it's not stated. Uh and, and I understand, I think, why it's not stated, but I think that that is what sort of concerns me. In relation to the, the growth policy process that we went through. Um and the sort of ambiguity of not knowing what that could look like and just the concern that. Once this development is approved and those lots go on the off-open market. If there is a mechanism to be more choosy. To who you sell to uh and, and perhaps that comes with these CCNRs or covenants or. Or maybe I, I have questions around if there are conditions that the planning board can recommend. Based on the types of developments that can go in highway commercial, can we suggest? Some conditions on the type of development that goes up there as well. Doesn't shit, Tori is shaking his head. So you know, I, I one hundred percent respect what you're saying. And, and wish it to be true. I'm just concerned that there aren't enough guarantees in this. When you start to put these lots on the open market. Um so I'll stop there and go ahead, Misha. I see your hand is back up.
And I completely understand that the more restrictions you have on. The lots as you're trying to sell them, the potentially fewer buyers you have for them. But I have seen towns. Who put very strict design standards. On their building that have completely come alive and flourish such as. Leavenworth, Washington, Aspen is a huge one for that. I mean, you want, you drive into Aspen and you know you're in Aspen because everything. Fits the Aspen model. Um and I think that it can be. A huge selling feature for your properties to have that in place. And I would love to see it become a. Um condition of the approval. There are strict design standards put into place. I think a lot of people are concerned about. How it's gonna look. And we've all driven through towns where it. Is just one fast food restaurant after another. And. There's nothing compelling about that aesthetic. Thank you.
Super quick, Madam Chair, would you let um Chris Nowman back in? He texted me that he fell out and he's in the waiting room right now.
I actually have a question for Chris, so it's perfect.
Um here he is. Is he back in? Here he is.
There you go.
I apologize.
We're, we're glad you're back. Taya, Taya has a question.
Um following on this conversation, um thinking about that, that southeast corner. You know, when you, when you see it on a piece of paper, it looks flat, but I appreciated Chris uh seeing the contours in relation to the plating. And so I'm curious, just in terms of development. Um because it, it, those are some pretty steep slopes and what that means for um. The, the view shed coming into town there. What, you know, just what was some of the thinking around the plat lines? Um and those contours. Were the, were, was that taken into account is my question.
Uh yeah, great question, Taya. Absolutely um taken into account from a, from a couple perspectives. Um one. Was the, obviously, the, there's topography in some of those lots that. You know, aren't conducive to, to any sort of, you know, development, but there is room on each lot. Um for, you know, a modest platform of development for both building footprint and any associated uses like parking. Um but A, to be honest, that actually restricts. The amount of the sca- the scope and scale of development that could be on some of those lots that have the more. Steep topography. Um also generally, the topography shields those lots from the interstate. Um you know, the, a lot of those in that southeast corner um are not, not visible. Um from the interstate or would, would only be glimpses perhaps. So which is obviously good for any, any development that would go there, whether regardless of the use to have that. Um a buffer from, from, you know, direct line of sight and sound from the interstate. Um generally, then the views from those lots are looking, you know, north, northeast. And would have views out over the wetlands and across Highway ten and. You know, over to the foothills uh north of town. But. The topography, yeah, played a huge role. That's why those lots in that portion of the subdivision are irregular shaped. Um the other thing, because you know, ideally you would have nice symmetrical. You know, rectangular lots. Um but there was also some other things that informed those geometries and that is. Um there are city regulations um dictating. The relationship between the width of the lot and the length of the lot. So that you can't have a super skinny shotgun lot. Um they have to, there, there's some proportional requirements to. To believe it or not, keep people from doing lot sizes even wonkier than some of those we've proposed, cause. If you didn't have those restrictions, obviously, people would. Um so there was some regulatory. Uh requirements that, that had to be met to dictate those lot layouts. Topography in that corner played a, a significant role. That again, does two things. Limits the amount of area actually in those lots that could be developed. Um but also, on the other side of the coin, the shinier side, provide a buffer from um the highway and. Some actually decent views uh to the north, northeast. Um would, did that answer your question, Taya?
It did, thanks.
And you know, zoning, e- even the zoning definition also defines somewhat what goes in there. Cause there are guidelines that have to be uh fulfilled in that zoning reg. The regulations for this district that not just anything can be built there, but. Perhaps uh some CCNRs would be in order to help um. Create a certain character out there.
And I appreciate that comment, Mr. Smith, because community character was a significant theme that came up. In the recent growth policy, which is why, again, I think with. The uncertainty uh of what could, what will go there is what, is what makes, I guess, me nervous. So. If there's a way to. Ensure guarantee uh. Uh that. You know, that the, the community character, the smart growth principles are. Are met and, and maintained as, as the sales of these developments go through them. That, that would be ideal. I think it would make. At least me more comfortable with what's uh, you know, potentially gonna happen. Okay, Jonathan, I see your hand up.
Um yeah, so I was just wanted to follow up on um kind of the, what we've been talking about, about. Kind of the vision for the area and how that's developed because I think that the staff meanwhile touches on. This being a non-residential subdivision um based on its zoning, but I think. That um when I was at the newspaper a few years ago, covering the rezoning of this lot from light industrial to highway commercial. Um I think there were developers, Andrew and Richard presented an idea of what this would become. And I think there was a, I remember seeing a much more comprehensive um idea of what this would become. And it included a lot of residential. And I was just wondering why that wasn't. Why that idea hasn't been presented now or um and also just. Cause it seems to me that it is a residential subdivision, so we need some of these things like. Two-tiered lots and alleys to be considered, but I just kind of wondered. How that idea changed or if it has changed.
So, so Jonathan, I remember working with you on that article and congratulations, you made the front page. Uh with that little bubble diagram. And the reason that bubble diagram was developed all those years ago by Sanderson Stewart. Is that um the city said. Uh before we change zoning, could we get an idea of what you contemplate? So it was not a firm commitment. It was not a master plan. Uh it was an idea and really. Uh and, and this, and that map appeared on the front page and it showed, I believe, eighty-five-ish doors. Of four, six, and eight plexes in the southeast corner. And then it contemplated um commercial stuff around the rest of it. I mean. Obviously, the Highway ten frontage, it would be foolish to do residential there with that high visibility and thousands of, of cars a day. Um and that was literally, I, I think Sanderson Stewart called that a bubble plan or something like that. It was just an idea so that the city could look at it and say, oh, that's where it may go. Um I am not a developer. I know developers and they all have thick scars from their first five projects. And uh I don't intend to. Adorn myself with any new scars at this age. So um. The, the, the good news, I guess I would say is, I think. I think that the highest and best use for a lot of it is residential. Um there is, I, you know, we haven't had people banging our door down saying. Oh, I wanna, I mean FedEx was really a nice thing. It was a godsend that it happened because they put in an enormous. Along with Livingston West, we chipped in six hundred grand. Uh an enormous amount of sewer and water infrastructure that now will make available other development. And I guess I'd go back to again, saying that uh. On a project-by-project building permit and CO basis, the city will have a fair amount of say. In fact, a significant amount of say in what goes on out there. You know, and I'm, I'm committed as a citizen and as a uh person who also owns a residence. At Lewis and Kay to having it be nice. And that was our vision from the very beginning. And we cooperated with the city to bring in the oversized utilities. And um there's a ton, I think Shannon might have said, there are a ton of checks and balances. Still. Waiting in front of everybody down the road.
And may I suggest, I don't know if Jim, you would be willing to speak to. I think there. Is a little bit of confusion between residential subdivision and non-residential subdivision and certainly. My clarifying statement, but please, please um share yours is. When something's referred to as a residential subdivision, it is one hundred percent. Dictated by zoning to be residential use and a non-residential subdivision. Could either have no residential use or have a mix of uses. Um is, is that accurate uh statement, Jim?
Yes, Chris, that's uh, that's my position and our subdivision regulations. Uh are pretty vague. They, they mention it only in, in certain design standards. But they don't define it. So I have to fall back on zoning and the history that I have with their zoning ordinance. Uh I can't give you an exact date, but it's not been a dozen years. That any residential use was allowed in the highway commercial zoning. That was changed from the original highway commercial up until that point. Was nothing but commercial use.
Sorry, Tori first. I see your hand up and then Misha can go next.
Thank you, Jesse. Um and I, I agree, I do appreciate all the input from. From Mr. Fields and the planners and. And Shannon who understands how, how all this is going to impact um city infrastructure. I think that. An important thing that hasn't, um and, and I have, I have plenty to say and I'm, I'm gonna just start, start with this and. And see where that takes the, the discussion, but I think an important um. An important framing has not been added to this, this discussion so far. And, and that is what we're doing with um permitting or, or not permitting. The subdivision is creating a, a new center in Livingston. Um I, I've, I've done a lot of research on, on the impacts of, of polycentric development typically in, in much larger regions than. Than Livingston. Um but you know, you can, you get in, in, depending on the way. But you know, you can, you get, in, in, depending on the way you categorize a center, you can see downtown Livingston being a center, potentially the development that, that has happened around Exit 333 being a center. And, and in, in my evaluation, those are the two centers that exist currently in the city of Livingston. What I think we're talking about here is the creation of, of a new center. A, the, I think one of the reasons we haven't framed it that way so far is because the lots that we're looking at are, are very large. And because of this highway commercial zoning, there's really no way of saying what the land uses are going to be, because highway commercial zoning is incredibly, is an incredibly permissive zone. It allows for almost any kind of development. But I, I think that we've heard from Mr. Fields and I think that, you know, being informed participants in Livingston, we know there's a, a great deal of demand for housing. So it is quite possible that a wide variety of, of housing types could be developed after this land is subdivided. The impacts of which have not really been clearly articulated in this proposal, because there is really no suggestion of what's going to happen here. It's just a suggestion of subdividing the existing land after it's been developed for two large scale commercial uses so far. But I just really want, I just wanted to put that out to the group that, that that's really what's on the table here is the, is the creation or allowing the market to create a brand new center in Livingston that I think the public has recognized is far away from the current centers and current areas of activity of our city. I've got, I've, I've got a lot of other points to make, but I, I'll, I'll put it back to the group and I, I see that Misha and Taya have comments as well. So thanks.
Uh, Misha, do you want to go next and then we'll go to Taya?
Sure, sure. Um, so one thing that made me think when Tori was speaking is, as Mr. Field said, his hope, maybe hope that residential properties are going to be built on these lots. The traffic report didn't take that into consideration at all, as far as how that's going to affect the traffic patterns. If, if you're putting in eighty-five doors, for instance, that's going to have much more of an impact than of people coming and going at all times of day than if it's, if it's another use. So that was one thing. And then I believe I remember from our last meeting, Mr. Smith saying that of the multifamily that was going in, the parking would all be at the front of the building. And coming from someplace that has blocks and blocks and blocks of multifamily, that's not with any kind of an aesthetic at all, there are tons of multifamily developments that do have parking in the rear, even if the driveway to the parking is to the side and then the, the building is on the, on the street front, which is a completely different aesthetic than having eight parking stalls off-street, but in the front of the building. So those were just my two comments on those two things. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Misha. Let's go to Taya. Taya, you're muted. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Jesse. I appreciate Tori's point and Misha's point, and I'm sorry to take it in a, in another direction. But I just figured this is our time when we're sharing our thoughts. The, so one of the things coming out of the growth policy, not in relation to annexation and subdivision regulation, was just the concern for the natural environment and prioritizing that in the city of Livingston. And so I did notice from the wetland delineation report, some of the wetlands were left out and would become lots. And so I was hoping that either Andrew or Chris could, could speak to that.
I'll, I'll start and then Chris is the technical person can finish. There are areas, the, the wetlands itself is sort of checkerboarded. So there are areas in the wetlands area which are not delineated as wetlands, because it's either high ground or it's the old Highway 10 roadbed, there's still asphalt up there. And it's anticipated that on one or two of the PFL lots, that there would be a trade-out, that they would remove that high ground and, and make, excuse me, I just muted myself, and, and make new wetlands to replace a couple skinny little fingers. And if you look at that map, there are skinny little fingers, maybe twenty feet wide that stretch into that. The other alternative, if, if that were not accepted on a one-for-one basis, would be to have that be an amenity within the property. If you look at the Oracle Campus over in Bozeman, where PFL used to rent an office, it's got wetlands between two buildings and it's really pretty nice. So net, no wetlands are anticipated or actually allowed to go away. It just becomes a question of where they are and what makes sense. Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I think that's, that's exactly right, Andrew. I mean, those lots that do, there's that lower kind of southern finger, the couple southern fingers that come out of the, the main body, the wetlands, that some of those proposed lots contain or overlap. And there's a, you know, very specific and strict requirements that any development would have to go through to identify the, the impacts of the proposed development and then also propose mitigations that is part of the review and approval process. And actually requires, you know, permitting at the federal level. So to be quite honest, I mean, might not be a stretch to say, you know, for that reason, depending on who was looking at those lots, it could be viewed as an amenity or it could be viewed as, you know, something probably most developers actually don't want to deal with. And, you know, you, it wouldn't be a bad bet to bet a dollar, those might be the last slots to sell. To be honest, if they even ever do, but if they did, there would be mitigation and impact requirements and a 404 permit from, from the federal, the federal government. And of course, the city would review those plans and applications as well. So yeah, there is some overlap, Taya. You, you did see that correctly.
That's helpful, though. I appreciate your comments.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes, Shannon.
Yeah, my, I have a turn?
Yes, please.
All right. So here, here, here are the facts as I see them. We have three options tonight. We have an option to approve this subdivision as presented. We have a option to approve with some additional conditions that we as a group have already discussed a few of those. Are, are we denying? Fact, this property was annexed eighteen years ago. It was rezoned in 2018. I spent some time going back and looking at and watching those city commission meetings that, there were two readings. The zoning from light industrial to highway commercial passed the city commission by a four-to-one vote on both, on, at both meetings. At that time, the planning board approved this, the zoning commission approved the highway commercial zoning. I was passionate about the growth policy. It's a huge document that has a lot of great information. Unfortunately, not a lot of those recommendations have been put into legislation at this point. So I view that as a guiding document and what the community currently desires, but there's not a lot of legislation or ordinances or codes that solidify a lot of those recommendations. I would like to make a motion to approve this subdivision with conditions and open up the floor to the planning board members to identify what those commission, those, those conditions are. I am certainly willing to start with the list that I have and, and I know Jonathan mentioned one in particular and I know Stacy mentioned a possibility and, and I do, I know we did get a letter from an adjacent property owner there that requested some fencing, so that's where I'm at. I, I'd like to make the motion to approve this with conditions that we can certainly discuss in more detail.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's open for discussion. Stacy, did you want to go first or? Will you raise your hand? Sorry.
Well, well, I was just saying that I, I seconded the motion was why I was raising my hand.
Okay. Tori, did you want to go next? I saw your hand too.
Yeah, I've got, I've got plenty more of comment on the, on the subdivision. I guess I'll say it now before we consider a vote on approval of the subdivision. I didn't realize we were there. One of the, one of the responsibilities and purviews of, of the planning board, per Montana code annotated, is to consider pattern of development. And to me, that, that's the biggest, that is the second biggest issue in impeding me from, from voting for, or, or considering this, this development. If you look, if you just look at the map, in, in my planning education, I would describe that, that pattern as loops and lollipops, which is a, an emblematic pattern of, of suburban sprawl. And what, what that means is basically curvilinear streets that, that makes it so it's more difficult to see your neighbors. It also makes it so you have to travel further distances so that you have to rely on, on a private vehicle and so forth. So there are a lot of, and I could, there are a lot of reasons that that kind of development is out of step with what was put forward by the community as they came together to help us develop the growth policy. I mentioned already that this is, this would be a creation of a, of a brand new center in the city of Livingston. I think that that's problematic also when considering what the, the vision of the community was put forward in growth policy. We've, we've done a lot of talking so far this evening about prior decisions and how, how they influence what's before us today. And I think that that's actually something that's really critical to consider tonight when we're voting. Especially when it comes to the pattern of, of development. One of the things, one of the, the other subdivision that came before us this, this year was the subdivision on, on the northwest side that was having trouble complying with the subdivision regulations because of the, the street network and the pattern that the previous to develop, previous phase of the development created in the street network. What, what we would be doing in accepting this subdivision request is creating precedent for the future street network and future patterns as if, if the best case scenario of, of the development, then going backwards towards the city instead of out from the city, for it to go backwards towards the city, there would be precedent set for, for those patterns in that future development. I think that what's, what, what we're presented with here geographically, geometrically is not the pattern that is desired by the citizens and is presented through the goals and strategies in the growth policy. I keep mentioning the growth policy. There's been some discussion of the the validity of, of leaning on the growth policy in our decision. Montana code-annotated requires that we consider the growth policy and the limitation on that consideration is that it cannot be the only criteria by which we make our decision. I have some other issues with the subdivision, namely one, one of which I brought up a month ago, which is that the, the requirement of blocks. I'll, I'll read the subdivision regu- regulation. Blocks must be wide enough to allow for two tiers of lots unless the narrower configuration is essential to provide separation of residential development, which we've heard many times is not guaranteed here as a result of the subdivision. Is, is essential to provide separation of residential development from traffic arteries or to overcome specific disadvantages of geography and orientation, or unless the governing body approves a design consisting of irregularly shaped blocks identified by cul-de-sacs. That's pretty clear to me. And as such, this would require a variance. I think that there's some disagreement between my analysis and staff's analysis and that's fine. That's, that's the purpose of having these boards. Staff doesn't, is not the only one who makes a decision and we're informed, our decision is informed by the recommendation of staff. I, I, I think that that, that subdivision requirement is, is clear. So that's, that's two of my points. One, one of the things we have to consider as well is impact on public services. We've had some degree of discussion about that. I think it's really difficult, actually in this case, to particularly when it comes to traffic, to consider the impact on, on traffic and transportation services to our community, because again, because of the breadth of uses allowed by highway commercial. I, I, I use this Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual to do a number of different estimates and it is a huge range of estimates of, of the number of daily trips that would be generated at, at full buildout of, of this development. Regardless of the market, if, if these, if these, if this property is subdivided, at some point, it will be developed. It, it will be completely developed. Eventually, the market through its cycles will allow for the, the complete buildout of, of all these lots. So that, that's going to happen. As I said, it's going to create a brand new center in our city. I don't think that's, I don't think that's what the citizens of our community are interested in. Another thing that we're supposed to consider as, as an advisory board to the commission is, is public comment. We heard one public comment for, in support of the development. And that was, that was largely related to the potential for residential development. Again, we've, we've clearly gone over the fact that there really is no guarantee of what kind of development is going to happen here. And then we also had some discussion about design standards and the potential of, of including that as a, as a condition of, of approval. The feasibility of that, I think, is, is suspect. There are design standards set out in the subdivision regulation and that's typically where those, like the enforceable design standards would exist. But there, in our subdivision regulation, they're limited pretty much only to street design. So there, there is, there's not a lot in, in my, in my take. There's not a lot that the planning board, or if this goes, or when this goes to the commission, the commission can do to require a cohesive development, because these lots are going to sell one by one. And so unless there, those CCNR, you know, actually HOAs and that kind of thing are a little bit out of my area of expertise, but I, I think it would be very difficult to actually enforce the creation of, of a CCNR. One final comment. So I'm, I'm just going to lay out the, the, the most salient factors to me. The first is the pattern of development, doesn't comply with, does not comply with what we put forward in the growth policy. And it's going to lead to a, a poor precedent, that future development that's contiguous to this is going to then create similar loop and lolly, lollipop style suburban sprawling development. Second is that I don't think that it does comply with the subdivision regulations. I'm not convinced that, that that the block configuration actually complies. I haven't seen adequate. configuration actually complies. I haven't seen adequate evidence uh that it, that it does and that, that, that there's not a need uh for a variance. And then finally in the, in, after this meeting, we need to present our findings of fact and they need to be based on criteria that, that are set forth in Montana code annotated. Um and we need to make sure that, that the decision that's made tonight is not arbitrary and capricious so that it's actually based upon fact and based upon the requirements of our state, state constitution um and our, and our local um codes and regulations. And so that's why I pointed out those two different things um or those two most important things. Again, they're uh the pattern of development um and not complying with the regulations via the, the block requirement. And I've, think I've spoken for long enough. I will uh pass the baton on to my my fellow board members. Thank you all for, for giving me the chance to voice my concerns.
Okay, thank you, Tori. Anybody else have any discussion? Okay, I'm hearing.
I guess, in addition to Tori's concerns, I also believe that um this development doesn't comply with, or that basically I has an, it has a burdensome effect on local services. I believe that the developer uh needs to pay for the entire water main loop. Um as we've mentioned multiple times, de- developers paid for a lot more capacity out here over a decade ago and should continue to pay for that development. Um I'm concerned about the initial cost, but I'm also especially concerned about the that the city is overextending itself with this type of sprawling development and the burden that'll be pace, placed on taxpayers in the future um with a loop like this and it not being able to pay for itself. I'm also concerned um that about the con- the discussions about a tax increment financing district being used to help pay for that loop because if any TIF dollars that are not, that it, that would be going into that would not be going to other services like police, fire, roads and schools. I believe that's going to have a big effect on our local services as well. And um I'm also concerned that um putting CCNRs as part of the conditions of approval would, is pretty undoable and I, I just think that there's too many uncertainties here. Um and I also think that this would have an impact on wildlife as Colonel proposed because as a, a Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks points out and um there aren't any is it, is anything here that um would help uh mitigate those impacts.
Okay, Jim.
Uh just one more, one more comment. About the uh water main, as Shannon characterized it as it is a sort of a driving force for growth and it's encouraging uh accommodating more growth in that area. Um which reinforces what Tori had to say about the uh the bubble gum and popsicle or whatever he said. Um and perhaps the uh master plan needs to be revisited to have it comport with the growth policy and other uh desires of the community so that we are not being driven by something, another thing that was done at some point uh that when the powers that be decided that we were going to move that way to grow. We should probably revisit that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Anybody else? Stacy?
Um yeah, I I guess then I I'm kind of not in the same camp. I think that uh I, I've just come back from a twenty-three-hundred trip through Colorado. I've seen sprawl and I've seen what you don't want to have. Um but I also think that at some point we have to have faith in uh some uh planning. This land has been there and it's been part of the city for eighteen years. And I don't think that we should penalize them for having purchased their land and for being part of the city limits. And to say that they're not located in the right place because they're not closer to downtown. Granted, it, it changes, it's already changed the entrance to Livingston because it's there. So um I don't know if any of you remember, but there used to be trailer courts, trailers on adjacent property. And they were pretty ugly. Um they eventually were removed. So I, I am in support of having a planned development that is tastefully done, subjectively tastefully done. Um I think we're, we're kind of nitpicking the terminology. And I think that the wildlife can go through the wetlands, that, that there's plenty of of uh open space that's created throughout the, the um property. And if we didn't have water, we wouldn't have BFL in the industry that supports Livingston. We wouldn't have the FedEx building that supports employers, employees in Livingston. And a couple of my conditions would be that um that we um have some wind shelters built as part of the covenants. Um for the garbage to go along with the beer cans. If, if this is the right time to do that, but we were going to move into um what some of our conditions were. I thought that's what the motion is on the table. Is that right, Jesse?
Do you have to approve the motion first, Stacy, and then?
Okay, alright, alright, I will wait, I will wait then. Then I'm, I'm, I'm through with my comments.
Okay. Anybody else have any comment?
Can I call the board? I mean, we have a motion on the table. Can we move forward with that and see where we end up? And then continue discussions if it doesn't pass?
Let's just, you know what? It's a, it's a motion. It's a second. It's board discussion. We're going to go through board discussion and then we'll vote, Shannon, if you don't mind. And then, and then we can move on with whatever the decision is after that. So Taya, do you have a, a discussion point about the motion that's on the table?
Yes, um I was just saying, I think uh for, for, I wanted to hearken back to Tori's point um about public comment um and really, you know, as, as, as board members uh representing the, the interests of the community um and what we've heard. And we didn't directly address public comment. Um but so I just, I want to make note of that um as we go, as we do go forward.
Okay. Any other discussion about the motion on the floor? Okay. The motion is that we approve this with conditions that would be discussed after we make, approve the motion, approve or deny the motion. So let's get ready to vote. Sorry, my brain's starting to not work.
Madam Chair.
Vote, may I speak?
Yes.
Generally, when you make a motion with conditions, you define those commission, those conditions prior to the vote.
Okay.
That way everyone knows and understands exactly what they're voting on.
Fair enough. Do you want to? Alright, what are the conditions? Who wants to go first? Shannon, you have conditions. Which conditions would you like to add to this motion?
So I have a condition on um the requirement to modify the Starlo Booster Station to provide adequate domestic and fire flow and pressures is one condition. Second condition would be a waiver of SID um for any water or sewer system improvements to provide additional capacity um from the city's system. Condition three would be assisting the city with acquiring public access for a multi-use trail uh on the existing water and sewer main easement. Condition four would be the developer uh maintains the stormwater pond, uh the ponds um unless the ponds are put in, on city property. And I have a condition based on a public comment on um installing a privacy fence for, for a homeowner out. Those are mine.
Okay, great. Thank you. Who else has a condition? Stacy, did you have a condition?
I do.
Go ahead.
My conditions were uh to have uh wind filters uh for the garbage cans. And I also had the condition on the, the fence around the neighbor's property. And landscaping and design of the subdivision be done. And
Landscaping and design?
Landscaping and design, you know, like what, what PFL already has done with the trees and the the uh, the property. Um and that we recommend writing a letter to um the Department of Transportation recommending that turn lanes for both exit roads be installed. I agreed with uh, I'm not sure who said it, but that the full buildout of this will uh definitely increase the traffic and that it's a hazard for both going into and out of that without having turn lanes, of which the developer has no control over. But um if this were to be approved, um a letter from the planning board in support of turn lanes. And also, I don't know whether Misha, are you going to have a condition on um for the design standards or?
I can, or since you've got the floor, you can.
I think, I didn't want to take it away from you, but well, I'll let you do that one. And that's um and that's all.
Okay, thanks Stacy. Misha?
I would like there to be a condition that there be design standards in place for all of the on all the lots for the, the purchasers.
Okay. Anybody else?
I um would like a condition that the covenants require um either bear-proof garbage containers or um some, or let's see. I'll just do that, bear-proof garbage containers.
Okay. Any other conditions? Okay, Taya, do you have one?
Um wildlife-friendly fencing, this particularly around the wetlands and the open space.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so motion on the table with eleven additional conditions. Yes, Mr. Not Noman?
I just wanted to point out, and I don't, Jim had some conditions in his original staff report and I was just flipping to that to see if they were all covered, but Jim, I did all you, the ones in your staff report. Are those vis-à-vis included in this list or did we need to add some more?
That's entirely up to the board. If they wish to retain those, I would recommend that.
I, I would also recommend that we retain the conditions listed in Jim's staff report from August of twenty-twenty-two. Which I think there are several.
There are twelve, Madam Chair.
No, so we are up to twenty-three conditions. Are we ready to vote? Okay. I need, okay, we're just gonna vote. Here we go. Stacy? Or? Jim Barrett?
No.
Misha? Tori?
Against.
Jonathan?
Against.
Taya?
Against.
Shannon?
Or.
Uh and Jesse is also against. One, two, three, four, five, the one two. Okay, that motion failed. Tori?
I'd like to propose a motion that we deny the subdivision request.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
A second is Jonathan. Okay, any discussion? I'm going to just say one thing before we vote on this one. Um and, and I, and this is really towards the developers and, and maybe city staff. This is the second subdivision approval that we have had come before the board since I've been on. And knowing the need for housing and smart growth, it is difficult for me as a planning board member to vote against some of these development proposals because of the need uh for these residential housing developments and uh and maybe more job creation. And so I, I truly want to say that I appreciate the uh thoughtfulness that you have in your mind for the vision of this. What I find so challenging is that the vision isn't articulated in the documents that we receive, so it's not written. And if there's any way in the future, prior to bringing these plans to either the planning board or the commission where we can have more frank conversations around what we think you might get when you get to us. Um or, or you'll also get this opportunity again, uh perhaps with the city commission, but I think it's it's very obvious that there's been a lot of money put into your proposal and a lot of time spent for both us reviewing everything. Uh and so I think there has to be a better process for us to work with developers so that by the time it does reach the planning board in the city commission, we are just overwhelmed with joy that these proposals are coming our way because of how much we know some of these things are needed. So I just wanted to say that and just recognize um the work and the cost that goes into this for you and, and the difficulty that we have in the position that we're in when we, we have to make these decisions on behalf of the community, which is really what I, I'm doing and I, I believe the rest of our board members are doing as well. Tori, I see your hand up.
Thanks. Thanks, Jesse. Um I'm just gonna, I just want to say I completely agree with, with what Chair Will Cox is saying and that um I, I take really seriously the, the rules that um direct as well as constrain um the decision-making process on, on both the board and the commission. And if, and, and I, I also am pained to, to turn down um development when we so desperately need it in our town. Um and I, and I, and I just wanted to say that I'm not against development. But I am, but what I am for is having a consistent application of the regulations and um and conformance with, with the growth policy because that was something that the community came together and worked on for a very long time. And it is, and it is a true representation of the desires for growth in our community. And, and when we see a proposal that conforms with the regulations and, or makes a compelling case that it conforms with the regulations and comports with the growth policy, I will be the first person to support it. And that's what I, that's what I sincerely want to do. Um unfortunately, I just don't feel like we're there today. Uh and I can't wait until we are. Um and so thanks, thanks Jesse for, for articulating that and allowing me to, to add my color to it.
Okay, Jim Barrett, I see your hand up.
And just briefly, um you know, we're called the planning board, and I know we're here as citizens representing our community. Some of us are more experts than others, most of us not experts, but most of us bring a. Uh bring the sentiments of the community and our knowledge and history of the area. And perhaps if we were truly a planning board that got to sit down before. The horse was out of the barn. And so all of these issues could be resolved in the beginning. Where there would actually be some planting, some planning in cooperation with the uh. Vision of the community, then we wouldn't find ourselves looking at something that's gone through all the hoops. And does not meet with what the community desire. So. It's unfortunate, but that's the reality right now. So maybe that's something that could be. Done in the future. Thank you.
Hmm Stacy, go ahead.
Well, um, I guess I feel like um there's been maybe a little lack of publicity from all of the community. As to this project upfront and um we represent the people. Um but I'm not sure how many people really knew this whole project was in the works completely. It hasn't had any newspaper coverage on it. It uh. It has had people who were, who are. Active in watching city uh politics. And um I don't think it's fair to say that we uh. Can blame any one entity or say exactly what the city wants. All we can do is is guess. So I just want to keep the perspective there.
Thanks Stacy. And I know you and I among and as well as other board members here tonight sat through copious hours of public comment. Through the growth policy. So I do appreciate that not everybody understands that planning board meetings are reviewing subdivisions. Um but when I think about the community, I think about those copious comments uh that we went through um last year. Anybody else want to make a comment before we vote? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Uh Stacy.
Could you repeat the motion?
To deny the subdivision approval. The motion is to design, deny the subdivision approval, recommend, recommend to the city commission that they deny the subdivision approval.
Against.
Okay, Jim Barrett.
For.
Misha.
I guess against because we're not. We've taken out all of the. St- conditions, right? That didn't pass. So now we're voting.
So the motion on the, sorry, I'll help, I'll reiterate the motion. So the motion was made by Tori. We have three opportunities this evening. We can accept the subdivision approval. We can. We can recommend that the city commission accept the subdivision approval. We can recommend the city commission accept the. Subdivision approval with conditions, or we can suggest to the city commission to deny the subdivision approval. So we opted with the first motion and vote. To not recommend. To the city commission to approve the subdivision approval with conditions. The second motion on the table is to deny the subdivision approval.
With none of the conditions in there.
It doesn't matter if there's conditions or not. We're just saying where we are, we are recommending that they deny the subdivision approval.
Okay, so can you ask the question again? Sorry.
Yes, so if you would like to vote yes, you agree that we should not. Recommend the city approve the subdivision, or we recommend the city deny the subdivision. If you vote no, you do not agree that we should recommend the city deny the approval of the subdivision.
Okay. Based on that information, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Tori.
For.
Jonathan.
For.
Tay. Or. Shannon.
Yes.
Okay, and I am also for. So that motion passes.
So. So Madam Chair, point of clarification in all of that. So. I I'm not clear as to the way you worded it. It was you were, you were wording it so that. We were, we were asking for, if you voted for, you were saying you were recommending it to the city commission. Or if you said no. So if you said you denied it, you were, if you said no, you were denying it.
No, Stacy, the motion was to deny it. If you said yes or for, you agree that you would like to deny. The subdivision approval.
Okay.
You voted.
Okay.
I just know, so you wanted, so you did not want to deny it, which is consistent with your previous vote. Does that make sense?
Yep, I just want to clarify that that's what I said.
Yes, yep, got it. And 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 let me just say that, just recall, we are an advisory board to the city commission. We are not the end-all-day-all. We just make recommendations. So that is our job. Um and that's what we've done for this vote that just passed. Andrew, I see your hand up. Do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, Chair Wilcox, I just want to make sure that when the board submits its findings or advisory. To the city council on the first motion, which was for approval with twenty-three conditions. Um my count was three yes and five no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Fields. It was three yes and five no. Stacy. Misha and Shannon voted for on that first motion. And Jim, Tori, Jonathan, Tay and myself voted against. Yes, I stand corrected.
Thank you, appreciate that.
No problem. Okay, um. Shannon, last time you deferred. Your planning board or your public works updates. Are you interested in deferring that again this evening, or would you like to give? Public Works Updates. I'm sure that's what's next on the agenda if I could find it. In here.
Um, I would respectfully request to defer on, it's eight oh eight and it's been a long week for me.
Okay. That's okay. That's all right. I think that's understandable.
Chair.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Stacy.
Could, could, could we just have, um, he, he made a presentation to the city uh commission. With an update of what was going on, at least could he um possibly email or send that out to the board? To the, to the planning committee.
Was it presented to the city commission?
Yes, it was.
Oh, could we watch the?
It's not updated. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a month old or so, but.
No.
I, I would be more than happy to forward the document I think I included in the commission packet. Um to the planning board members.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let me try and, I'm toggling here between all of our. Okay, public works. Jim, do you have any planning updates that you want to share?
Just to remind you to the planning board that we do have another uh subdivision application in the works. Uh scheduled for your next meeting, the nineteenth of October. You'll be getting material for that uh no later than the seventh of October.
Okay, Jim, could you let us know when the new planner is starting? Is she starting October one, or is there a date for her first?
As far as I know, she will be here the first workday of October, which is the third.
Okay, and I I do want to just throw out that opportunity and I I mentioned to you. Uh Jim, this in person, and I I said it earlier, if. If it's beneficial or of interest to this developer who is going to be prevent, presenting a subdivision to us in um. October. I I know that I as a planning board member will be happy to sit down and and discuss their proposal coming forward. And given the fact that we've now gone through two, I'd be happy to look at it or discuss it and I I. I, you know, if anybody else in the planning board would be interested in doing that, or if the developer is interested in doing that, just know that I would be open to that. If it's. Of interest. And then Misha, I saw your hand up, and then Tori, you're next.
I think it would be in everybody's best interest of time if we could potentially have like a Zoom meeting with that developer. So that we can have their presentation, have an idea of what they want to do, and then if we have issues. Prior to having to vote, it could be at least in their mind that this might be an issue. So maybe they could. Come back with something else. It just seems like we're kind of on a path of. Not, we're not all on the same page with with our expectations for following the growth management act. And if we could. Do that a little bit ahead of time, I would, spending an hour would be great. Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you. Tori?
Um. Thank, thanks Jesse. I I think one, I think we need to look into. The legality of meetings like that um with respect to ex parte communication. Um and and open meetings. Um. Policy, so that that's just something maybe uh staff can look into, like what, what are the boundaries on on those kinds of conversations? Do they have to be a, they might have to be a notice public meeting if we're doing something like that. Um I just don't want us to get in trouble. Um on on that. And then my, the original reason I raised my hand was uh just wondering if the. October meeting will be Zoom or in person. Um I, I'm going to be out of town, but we'll be able to participate via Zoom. If it's a, it's a Zoom meeting.
My assumption at this point is they're gonna be Zoom because the city was having trouble. Uh figuring out their um virtual and in-person. Platform. Jim, is that still the case?
I believe so. I mean, if the board was adamant that they wanted in in person, we could probably accomplish it. But at this point, it made me just simpler to. To give us some time and make sure that everything is up to speed before we make the switch.
Hmm hmm. Yeah, and um I also just wanted to mention that to Tori's point, I um I learned from Gallatin County. Planning board members, they do have some sort of pre. Application opportunity where the planning board members are able to sit down with the developers. I don't know. I can, I can look into what that looks like, um or maybe city staff could help us out with that, but. If there is a a legal piece to that, or if that's something that other um. Communities are able to accomplish, uh maybe we can, we can figure that out.
I will.
Okay, and then, oh, okay, thank you. Um Tay and then Jonathan.
I was, I was, I was gonna echo a similar point in that the uh sub- subdivision reviews is very much where ex parte communication comes into play. And so I just caution everyone um that that we make sure we're. Um not having separate conversations or meetings.
Sure. Thank you. And then Jonathan?
Um I guess I was meaning this for the board comments section, but um I just wanted to um. I know that we have an opening now for the non-freeholder seats. I am in the other non-freeholder seat. And I'm glad to have a voice on the planning board, but I still think that the separation of freeholder and non-freeholder seats is unconstitutional. And um really is unfair to people who don't own homes in this community. Um and because I think that just the city continuing to uphold the freeholder requirement for the other seats. Is unfair um to people who don't own homes, but do support the city through their property taxes. And are full citizens. And I think we just need to eliminate the freeholder requirement altogether. But I'm glad that we are at least hearing from non-freeholders now, but I just wanted to reiterate that. So thank you.
Any other final board comments before we wrap it up?
Okay, um I, I have one. Just that um the notification for meetings, if we could clarify that it's going to be only on the city website. And not on the planning board uh website of the city. Just to maybe something to pass on to the new planner. That it should be, it should appear at the, on the planning board site. As well as the city site.
Hmm, yeah, I noticed that too Stacy. So what Stacy's referring to is if you go to the planning board documents and open that up. The agenda goes up to eight seventeen twenty-two um and to get the agenda and board packet for this meeting, you have to go to. The meetings calendar, the city meetings calendar, open that up, and that's where you'll get the agenda in the packet. So it's a little bit misleading, and I did mention in a response to Lisa Lowey, I believe Jim. Woodhall was CC'd on that, that perhaps it could go in both places, just in case people are trying to get on and they're looking, it just, it's sort of intuitive to think that. The planning board agenda would be under planning board documents, and it's not, or at least it wasn't in August. So. Um if that's, I I agree with you Stacy, that can be a little bit confusing. Um. Any other last comments? Okay, I just again want to reiterate, I I think the the public, I think Mr. Fields and his team. Um I think the planning board, these are difficult meetings, the decisions are difficult, the conversations are good. And I think we, we're gonna do it again next month. Um and uh, you know, I think a lot of these. Conversations that we are having during these subdivision reviews are really. Intended, at least in my purview, to think about how we are setting precedent. For future development based on a growth policy that was updated in twenty twenty-one. And that is. How I am seeing these subdivision reviews playing out. And I think that either we will, we will. Sort of encourage uh. You know, future developers and and future projects to really understand that that's what the priority is for a lot of the. Community members and the, and and some of the board members as well. So. With that, I want to thank everybody again, and it is eight eighteen-ish, and we're gonna end the meeting. So thank you so much. And I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.